Evening, everyone. We'll call the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. Join us in our invocation, please. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you and serve your people. We know that all wisdom and knowledge comes from you. We pray you'll impart that wisdom and knowledge to us. We know that every moral virtue comes from you, that you'll be the guardian of our conscience, that you'll focus our minds, and you'll be the source of all our motives. That having pleased you will mean that we serve your folks and your people in the best manner possible. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll call on our county manager, Mr. Ron Smith, at this point, and ask you, sir, if you have any adjustments to this agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have one adjustment. I'd like to remove item F, which is memo number eight, from under Administrative Matters.
Okay. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to this agenda coming from any member of the Hearing none, I move that we adopt this agenda as amended with the deletion of item F under Administrative Matters. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm not aware of any presentation or appointments before the board this evening, so at this point, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing regarding the rezoning request. That is case number 1308-1. This is Wilson Properties Limited Partnership II, requests that 204.76 acres be rezoned from R-20, Single Family Residential, and R-O, Residential Office, to R-A, Residential Agricultural District. This is located Old Moxville Road, north of Wilson Park in Statesville. Mr. Todd, welcome, sir.
Good evening, board and chairman. The first rezoning case we have before us tonight, as Mr. Johnson stated, is on Old Moxville Highway, 200, just over 200 acres. You can see on the screen, outlined in blue, is the property. Currently, it's split zoned between R-O, which is Residential Office, and R-20, which is Single Family Residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone it to Residential Agricultural, with intent being to match what the property is currently being used for, which is agricultural. The 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be an employment center industrial flex office area, but the change is considered a lateral move because it's going from one residential zoning to another residential zoning. Based on minimum lot size requirements from the Land Development Code, the potential residential density of the parcel will actually decrease if the rezoning is approved, and a potential traffic impact should not come close to the road capacity. At this time, we know of no plans to develop this property. Again, it's just to match the zoning with the existing use, and our staff is recommending in support of this request. This is the 2030 Horizon Plan showing the partial, showing the employment center industrial flex. This is an aerial of the property. It is adjacent to a lot of industrial commercial uses that are in the Statesville jurisdiction and just across from Davis Hospital. Few pictures following, this is looking north on Old Moxville, the site's on the left. This is looking back toward the interstate with the hospital on the left and the site's on our right. This is a view into the property. And the parcel does have some road frontage on Old Moxville, and then it kind of horseshoes around some other properties. And this is the northern road frontage on Old Moxville. And this is just a view looking across Old Moxville Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board at this time.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Todd? Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this case? If so, please come forward and state your name for the record. In the absence of anyone desiring to speak, I'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman. I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve. Would you like me to go to read it for the record?
Yes, sir, if you would.
Okay. Motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that although the approval is inconsistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, the said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, based upon the rezoning request being a residential lateral move, reduction in density, and general conformity with existing land uses in the area and on site. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan. This approval allows all uses as described in the table of permitted and special uses, section 2.21 in the Land Development Code.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to rezoning request number 1308-2. Applicant Russell W. Chapman for owner Zimmer Orthopedic Surgical Products Incorporated requests that 10.25 acres be rezoned from R-A Residential Agricultural to M1 Light Industrial District. Location is 2020 Old Mountain Road, Statesville, North Carolina. Mr. Todd?
Okay. This property before us tonight, again, outlined in blue on the screen, is currently zoned Residential Agricultural. The property's been used industrial since the 70s, I believe, and in 1990, a 15,000 square foot building was built. So, a lot of it was more or less grandfathered in. But when countywide zoning came into place in 1990, there's no records why it really wasn't included, but most of what was there, most of what is there now was there in 1990. And you can see that the bottom portion is already zoned industrial, and then the property to the north is zoned industrial, and there's other industrial uses out there. The 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be corridor commercial, and with those adjacent properties zoned industrial, and the site being zoned industrial, staff is supporting this request. The proposed district fits into the existing development pattern and neighboring uses, and potential traffic impact should not come close to the road This is the 2030 Horizon Plan showing the corridor commercial strip. Here's a recent aerial showing the development of the property. And then a few pictures. This is the parking lot out front, looking south on Old Mountain, back toward the interstate. Looking north on Old Mountain, looking directly across the And this is around to the back of the property at the rear entrance on Mount Herman Road, looking back up toward Old Mountain where it intersects. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this rezoning.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Todd?
How soon this property served by conventional septic system? Doesn't have, wouldn't matter have a spray field or anything out there, would it?
I believe it's conventional, and as far as water, if you saw that big, big blue well that most of you may know, that's there as the fire suppression system for that building.
Any other questions? Mr. Todd? Okay, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in regard to this case? If you would come forward, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Nancy Fox, and my property joins theirs. And I'm just wondering why, you know, all of a sudden that this has come about. Is somebody interested in buying it, and what do they plan to do with it?
Can you address any of those concerns, Mr. Todd?
As most of you know, may know, Zimmer has closed down, and the property is on the market. I believe someone may be looking at it, but we do not know the details of who it is and what they're looking at doing. I'll just point back that it is a straight rezoning request, so anything in the industrial zone, according to our table, would be permitted.
Well, it makes it kind of hard for me to know whether to be against it or for it if I don't know what's being planned and what's gonna go in there. Because it's, I live right behind it, and if something goes in there like runs three shifts, that's gonna be hard on me.
Can, Mr. Todd, can you educate us as to what is permissible in M1, what type of operation we could reasonably expect to be located there?
There, there's a whole list of light industrial uses that could be permitted there. Of course, you know, there are, there are, there are other things in place that would, that should help protect as far as noise issues. They could definitely run a third shift out there with the straight request. I'll point out again, it's been used industrial since 1990, and we expect it to, to be something similar to what's been out there due to the, to the building, specifically to that building. They are gonna be limited. If you look back at that aerial, and with watershed restrictions, I don't see them being able to add anything out there. So, they are gonna be somewhat restricted to the current building, and with the design of that building, they'll be limited too with some of the uses.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in regard to this request?
Can, well, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can, so it was, they've always had an industry there, and, you know, I remember when Zimmer operated, and, but it, but it was never zoned for that because they were kind of grandfathered in.
Correct, and so therefore, it never came up over the years as being an issue until now it's put on the market.
But if it comes on the market, and somebody buys it, and we don't rezone it, then with an R-A designation, is their only option to tear the building down to plant soybeans or something, or?
Yeah, unless they did the exact same thing as Zimmer was doing there, then, then yes, they would not be permitted to do it.
When you say do the exact same thing Zimmer was doing, you mean medical devices or, or light manufacturing?
It would be pretty specific with medical orthopedic devices.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion. I would move that we were grant, that we grant this request, and let me follow my own advice and read it. I move that we approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that although the approval is inconsistent with the adopted 2030 Plan, the said approval is reasonable and in the public interest based on how the property has been used since the early 1990s, in conformity with the existing land uses in the area and on site. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan. This approval allows all uses as described in the table of permitted and special uses, section 2.21 in the Land Development Code. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Smith, that brings us to Administrative Matters, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna turn the first two items, A and B, back over to Matthew Todd. The first has to do with a request from NC DOT, and the second is concerning a release of jurisdiction request.
The, the first request is from DOT, and it has to do with the sound barrier walls along I-77 that they were proposed to be built in conjunction with the hot lanes. A study was done by DOT to determine what areas met their guidelines for putting up these walls, and as you see in the letter, it's supposed to cost Iredell no, no money. If it's deemed that any additional walls are required, then the county would have to put money up for those. But if the county chose, I should say, to have additional sound barrier walls, you'll see there in your packet that the state is asking for the local jurisdiction to make a recommendation on texture of the wall and also color. Town of Mooresville's staff has recommended the Ashler Stone, and as far as color, they did not make a recommendation. But we were told that we can only choose from the gray and the brown palettes, which are the last sheet in your packet. You know, within the county's jurisdiction, we're looking at approximately 1,100 feet of sound barrier walls. Within Mooresville, you're looking at about 6,400 linear feet with the sound barrier wall.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd?
Do you know if Mooresville consulted the businesses and residents adjacent to these proposed walls as far as the color and texture of the interior part of the wall?
I do not think they opened it up for any type of public comment.
I have a concern about that. I mean, as far as the roadside side, exterior side, that's a, you know, a public matter for, I guess, everyone to have input on. But as far as the inside side, I would certainly be interested in the opinion of the people who have businesses there, who live there, and are gonna have to look at that every day from now on. I'd certainly, you know, defer to their preferences on that, and I was just wondering if they'd?
They, I'm, I'm pretty sure they did not.
Any other questions? Are you planning on doing that, Mr. Todd?
No, in fact, we've got a deadline that was already extended once to get a recommendation back to the state. I think the deadline was extended to September 23rd.
Mr. Chair, I did, I did a little bit of digging on these patterns and talking to folks in different parts of the state, and some of the feedback that I got, it was not from the residents, we're gonna have to look at it, but some of the feedback that I got was, most everybody did not like the standard brick in areas that it had been put because it just looked like a, just an industrial wall.
Uh huh.
Most of the feedback that I received from folks said if you could vary the pattern, it made a huge difference if there was some variation to the pattern and looking at it every day. And I also looked at some that had been chosen in some very interesting colors, and they quickly became eyesores to the community. And so, the town of Mooresville cho, has asked us to go with the Ashler Stone. I would recommend either that or the Dry Stack Stone because of the variation in the pattern, and the wall looks, would have a more aesthetic appeal to it. And then, looking at colors that I've seen over the, the state, if you look at the, the brown page, number 30475 is a very neutral color. And if you look at the gray page, there's been a lot of success with 36400 and 36642, those three But I did not speak to any of the residents in Mooresville, but I talked to folks that have had these walls in their area, and that was kind of the feedback that I had, had received from folks who have to look at the walls.
Yeah, the, the Ashler, you know, the Ashler Stone or Dry Stack Stone work, work, for me, you know, if, if, if they've said they want to do the Ashler Stone, that's okay. And I was gonna say a gray version as opposed to a brown. The brown, I think, sometimes they look dirty. So, if you think 36400 is good, I'm, I shouldn't advise anybody on picking out any colors for anything at any time, under any circumstances. So, I can't, I'm not even gonna comment on the color.
The 36642 is a little more, it's more of a stone color, where the 36400 has a little more, it's brown and gray kind of mixed. But either one of those, I think, would, would not stand out like a big brick wall in the back of your business. Actually, I was very glad there was a woman on the board when this request came along, just to help me. I'm just teasing.
I'm, I'm kind of artistically challenged, and I think, but I think you're probably right. I'd prefer the gray to the brown personally. That's just my personal decision. But, you know, any big concrete wall is gonna look ugly, and trying to do this is kind of like trying to put, you know, putting lipstick on a pig. There's only so much you can do with a solid concrete wall.
I'll, I'll make the motion for Ashler Stone, and the color will be Renee 400?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be my motion.
36400?
36400.
I will support the motion. I have not challenged my, like Mr. Boone, I have repeatedly been reminded over my years of my total incompetence in such endeavors. Having been convinced of my own incompetence. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, if I got it wrong, I know my husband will drive by it every day and tell my boys, "Those are the walls your mother picked out."
Mr. Todd?
Our next item on the agenda is for release of zoning jurisdiction to Mooresville. I think you guys just saw one last month. This is on Rocky River, South Iredell. It's a 40-acre tract, but the request is only for a portion, and that's 38.09 acres. The southwestern most corner is zoned NB, and the county recently did that, I believe, last year. Mooresville has granted water and sewer to this site, and as, as typical, this site is to be annexed but would not be annexed till 2014. And this is just a call for the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd?
Do we need to make that a mo, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to call for a public hearing, yes. All is open for a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for October 1st, 2013, for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville by Joyce Johnson with Pfeiffer I. Johnson Limited Partnership, RLLP.
Okay. Any discussion?
Set for October 1st or September 17th?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think we, we would have ample time to advertise for a public hearing and have it in the second meeting of this month, wouldn't we, Mr. Smith?
Jane, do you? Matthew, do you have everything ready to go for October the 1st?
For October 1st? Yeah, that's the date we were going for, was October 1st.
I think time is of the essence to these folks. If we could do it sooner than that, I think.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to September 17th.
You think you could be ready by then? And I apologize. I, I thought we had an understanding.
We should be able to meet the 17th.
Okay, would you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to set a public hearing on September 17th.
The motion is for September 17th, a public hearing. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I apologize, I, I thought we had the details of that ironed out. I'll, I'll accept responsibility for that.
The next item we have is, is item C, and this is a request that I'll present. I'd like to respectfully request that the board appoint Malia Miller as our new Iredell County Tax Assessor. I'm asking for a four-year term for Ms. Miller, and that would be effective October 1st of this year, and her salary, if approved, will be $76,505.
All right. Any discussion on that request?
I will say one or two things, and please don't take anything I say the wrong way or mean to be in any way whatsoever, you know, negative toward any individual. But the tax assessor is a very powerful official, and I do, and I've expressed this privately, do have some trepidation about appointing someone from outside to a position like this. The county did have experience with that sort of appointment several years ago that was somewhat less than positive. I'll defer to our county manager's judgment on this appointment. He's interviewed the candidates. I'll defer to his judgment on this appointment. And he has stated, and I'm sure he's correct, that the job security for a four-year term appointed by the commissioners is no greater than the job security for a department head that's hired directly by you. So, I'm, I'm taking you at your word on that. With that, I, I welcome Ms. Miller, hope she does well, but I will caution, any occupant of this office, for any occupant of this office, it is very important that they be fair and courteous in dealing with the taxpayers of Iredell County.
There's no other discussion. I would offer a motion. We point Malia Miller as the Iredell County Assessor for a period of four years, with a salary to be $76,505. That's grade 79, step 54. Any discussion on that motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item D is a request to call for a public hearing for citizen input regarding the NC DOT Rural Operating Assistance Program Grant, and Ben Steichler Leather will make that request.
Good evening.
Welcome back, Mr. Steichler.
I appreciate.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you all again. This is the call for a public hearing set for the second meeting in September for the ROP grant, is what you've probably heard it called in the past. We have to have a public hearing to seek citizens' input on how we should spend that money before we can apply for that grant. It's a formula grant, so the money's already been set aside by the state legislature, and that is for this fiscal year. Typically, these things come out the fiscal year before, but because the budget ran so late with the state legislature, it's for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any question?
Yeah, it just says that, that you believe we're allocated $315,845. How does that compare to last year?
That is $14,903 more than we received last year.
Okay, all right. Very good. Do we need a motion? It does not indicate an action.
To call for a public hearing?
I'm sorry, got ahead of myself.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we need to call for a public hearing on September 17th.
Motion to approve, yeah.
We have a motion- We have a motion to approve the request to call for a public hearing on September 17, 2013, in regard to North Carolina DOT Rural Operating Assistance Program grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item E is a request for approval of a renewal agreement for the ATM machine that's located behind the Register of Deeds office. We have had this in place for two years, and we're asking for an extension of two years. Relatively minor rent that we collect, $100 a year, but we've looked at it when we put it together as a convenience for basically both parties, and I would respectfully ask for your approval.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith?
Only question I had, I assumed that the county's furnishing the electricity for this, which is some minimal amount, I don't know what it would be.
I'm not sure how much it would be, but yes.
You know, hopefully the $100 would cover that, but that just occurred to me that, you know.
Maybe we can meter it, eh?
I'm not sure, I can't tell you for sure that that's the case, but I would expect that it would cover it.
You know.
It's there for the convenience of our employees.
I understand that, I understand that. I'm not making a big issue out of it. That thought did occur to me, and there probably is some, probably not a very high user, but probably does use a little bit.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Marvin Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And I will mention, I'll be bringing another one of these at the next meeting, more than likely, if, the reason I pulled it tonight was just, did not get approval from the town of Mooresville yet. The final administrative matter is a request for approval of the August 20th, 2013 minutes.
Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Recreation Advisory Committee, Mr. Mike Heitz has resigned from this committee due to his That brings us to appointments, two boards and commissions. Personnel Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Can we nominate Eugene?
Yeah, we can nominate, we have one application in our packet.
Yeah, Eugene Chief.
Would, Mr. Norman, would you like to withdraw your motion to table and afford Mr. Robertson the opportunity, if he wishes?
Yeah, nominate Eugene Chief.
Okay. If Robertson nominates Mr. Eugene Chief, are there any other nominations? If not, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Chief by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Troutman Board of Adjustment, ETJ. We have one appointment.
Motion to nominate Wayne Long.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Rogers by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Charlotte Douglas International Airport Commission, and we have one appointment. At this point, I would, early on in this process, I had talked to Mr. Clontz and his willingness to serve, however, in talking to Mr. Richard Venruth, who is counsel for the New Airport Commission, he gave an interpretation of this legislation passed, which I now agree with him would disqualify Mr. Clontz, because he is an employee of a commercial user of the Charlotte Douglas International Airport. So it is no longer my intention for those reasons to nominate Mr. Clontz, but at this time, I would nominate Mr. Jim Lawton. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Jim Lawton by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business to come to our attention? Any new business? We have announcement of appointment of the new Iredale County Health Director.
I would think the cat's out of the bag on this one to some degree, but I'd like formally announce that Ms. Jane Murray will begin work as the new Health Director on September 30th, and Ms. Murray comes from Scotland County, where she was the CEO of Hospice and formerly was the Health Director at the Scotland County Health Department. And again, she will begin on September 30th.
September 30th. Does anyone else have any new business? I have an item that I would like to, if I could beg your indulgence, would like to speak to, and I'll try to keep my remarks as briefly as I can. But it is, it is a point that I think is going to require a great deal of discussion and some pretty serious consideration, and ultimately, in my mind, a decision within the next, at least the next few months. I would like to share with you, with my fellow commissioners and those present, a concern I have, have had for some time in regard to our economic development strategy. We are uniquely qualified from a transportation standpoint. Immediate access to I-40 and I-77 is a definite advantage. I-85 is not far removed. Our local airport, Charlotte Douglas, and rail are all transportation advantages that we enjoy. These advantages are not sufficient in today's recruiting environment. The process has changed, and we have not adapted to the present methodology employed by the majority of site consultants. North Carolina has advantages which can be exploited. Savannah and Charleston harbors are in the process or near completion of $1 billion expansions and improvements to deepen and expand their ports. These ports can be accessed via our highways without excessive transportation cost. Wilmington has the disadvantages in having one of North America's largest freshwater aquifers, less than 100 feet under its harbor floor. But it does have an extremely wide natural berth, and is presently deep enough to allow the import and export of medium equipment and products. And the state is currently assessing this matter and planning substantial improvements. But we are simply not ready. Why? Site consultants that I have spoken with generally like our county and communities. Those who are direct and honest say that we are not performing the due diligence necessary in today's market. This is a fault that they find across the state of North Carolina. Hence, we have an opportunity, in my mind, ripe for exploitation. Businesses are increasingly thinking regionally in their approach to locating facilities. These regional concerns are initially global, and then they're confined to regions in one particular country as compared to another. These are largely due to transportation costs, politically instability abroad, exchange rates, and the rule of law. At this point, though, once they decide which country they're going to locate, and then they look at the logistical considerations of a region, this is, this is the point of the process where they contract with a site consultant, who at a minimum is to provide them a short list of sites for them to visit. They may be contracted to present just one suitable site in a period in as little as 60 days. A process which used to take months now takes mere weeks. This process increasingly makes our current strategy obsolete and irrelevant. I remind you that this is a process of elimination. These site consultants are not seeking a way to keep your community in the process, they are really looking for a reason to eliminate your community from the process. Time constraints dictate an internet search of communities with suitable and ready sites. If they click on your website, and you do not have sites that can be delivered to a client within 60 to 90 days, you're more than likely they're going to click off of that website and continue their search. To be successful, what I believe we must have are what our customers' needs are. We must have a suitable inventory of sites, which must contain a list of sites on our website with most, if not all, of the following. They must have proper zoning. They must have utilities. This means water, sewer, electric, fiber, natural gas, perhaps, and perhaps rail. They must be environmentally clean, with a minimum of a Phase 1 environmental study having been accomplished. They must be cleared. At a minimum, they must have a service road. There must be a topo mapping for review, and they have to have drawings depicting a layout for future plan development. Remember that a 60 to 90-day mandate exists contractually for most site selection processes. We can see these tasks cannot be accomplished in the time allotted, if that time is 60 to 90 days. The result is that we are not even going to be given serious consideration. Our website must provide the inventory of available sites with detailed information about each site. Requests for information must be responded to quickly and comprehensively. Please understand that buying and developing land is not the strategy being suggested. Substantial tax increases and the moral hazards associated with negotiating the sale of taxpayers on land are valid concerns with which I agree. What is suggested is an approach which relates to current market conditions. The strategy will require money to be spent. These costs can be factored and recovered over time. Our present strategy relies too much on incentives. If you talk to these folks, what you will find is incentives have now become approximately 15 to 20% of the deliberative process. What they are concerned about is time, an initial cost, and the continued cost of operation in any community. In short, it is a quantitative process. Qualitative comes later, such as quality of life, schools, recreational opportunities. But it is an unemotional, very sterile, time and money consideration. And if you do not have a product deliverable of these folks in a short period of time, you will not be paid a visit. If you are paid a visit and you cannot ramp up and rezone a piece of property, have utilities to it, do a Phase 1 environmental study within 60 days, you will not be considered. It is a different approach. But I think that it is an approach that is consistent with today's market. We must change. At our fall/winter planning session, we will have a presentation in regard to a strategy similar to this. I would invite everyone to examine the strategy, change the strategy, question the strategy. But I would say that we must change. We may not like change, but if we don't like change, folks, we will like irrelevance even less. Because the strategy that we have today is not congruent to market forces that are in place today. We have an opportunity to get ahead of every community practically in North Carolina if we will develop this strategy. If we're willing to make a commitment on the front end to prepare these sites, and we can have a website suitable to where they can gather the information they need, and we can respond quickly, I think we will see the number of visits paid to this community increase. I know, I know how these things work. First time we get a visit, and they don't locate here, there will be the naysayers who say, "No, I told you so." The fact of the matter is, when you go fishing, you don't catch them all. And I've been doing business for 30-something years, and I can tell you, every customer I call on is not going to buy from me. But I don't need every customer I call on to buy from me. I just need a few of them. And we'll get a few of them. And when they get to the qualitative aspects of our community, I think that's where we will have a significant advantage. And I will lobby, I'm going to make no apologies, I'm going to lobby for this, I'm going to push for it. I'm not looking to, I'm not looking for ways to spend your money. I sincerely believe this is in the best interest of our community. Thank you very much. Any other new business? County managers report.
The only, the only thing I have for you tonight is a letter, Gene, if you'll pass this down, that I received from the sheriff. I think after talking with Gene this afternoon, you may have received it as well. It has to do with the crime lab. And I just wanted to give you an update. We are working with the sheriff's office on that, and are prepared to also bring that up at the work session in November.
Invite?
Pardon?
Be critical. They have an understanding of the business plan we're expecting.
They, they're doing a good job. They're doing a good job. Susan and I have seen a couple of renditions so far, and it's looking, looking pretty good.
Okay, thanks, sir. If there's nothing else to come to our attention, I would move we enter into closed session under Economic Development, General Statute 143, 31811A4. Attorney-client, General Statute 143, 31811A3. And Personnel, General Statute 143, 31811A6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
There will be action taken as a result of our closed session. I believe Commissioner Griffith has a motion prepared.
I do. I make a motion to call for a public hearing on September seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, at seven P. M. regarding an economic development incentive ranging between fifty-eight thousand two hundred and one hundred sixteen thousand four hundred over a five-year period for project metal based on an investment ranging between three million and six million in Iredell County.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'll offer a motion at this time in regard to the consolidate, that we consolidate departments of planning and development, central permitting, and code enforcement into the Department of Development Services. This department will therefore be comprised of three divisions: planning, central permitting, permitting, and building standards. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. There's no other business to come to our attention. All for motion, we adjourn. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.